I call this meeting of the Board Curriculum Committee to order. The committee would like to welcome the audience. Viewers may watch live Board Committee meetings online at TCAPS.net/Board, and recorded meetings may be viewed on demand at the same address. So, just really quick, we have some new faces at the table, and I always like to kind of announce who's here. So Kelly, will you just start us with an introduction?
Yes, Kelly Walter, Executive Assistant to Dan Tysworth.
Shelley Sponge, it's a pleasure to be here. I work at Munson, and I am the Chief HR Officer.
Tiffany Palmill, Executive Director of Special Education.
Dan Tysworth, Chief Academic Officer for elementary.
Lino Humphreys, TCAP School Board Vice President.
Erica Moonmore, TCAP's Board Trustee and Curriculum Chair.
Jonathan Wager, Superintendent for Public Schools.
Jassy Houghton, I'm the Chief Academic Officer for secondary.
Brandy Kay, Director of Curriculum and Instruction.
Misty Warner, Director of Full Child Systems.
Noah Morgenberg, Prosecuting Attorney.
Randy Fuele, I'm the Under Sheriff for the Grand River Sheriff's Office.
Perfect, thank you all for being here. And so we'll move right into our public comment. I'm guessing we have no public comment here today on the snowy day. So we'll move on to procedural items. So we are at the draft meeting minutes portion of the agenda. Are there any changes to those meeting minutes?
I have none.
Okay, we'll move on to our district course catalog update for 2425. Jessie.
Yeah, these are some of our online courses that we are adding for the Compass Learning Center, getting ready to start second semester in January. I know it sounds like we're thinking ahead, but we are thinking ahead in what might students need and what do we think we can run. So that's a list of all of these classes are those online ASLs courses.
Great, great. And what are our numbers in there right now? Do we know?
Yeah, currently, right now, we're sitting at just about 90 full-time students in that virtual program. We are anticipating, we have a waitlist right now for second semester to add some students there too. Yeah, we should be over 100 at second semester.
That's great, 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 great. Okay, excellent. Next item is the field trip request. So I'll defer to Jessie.
Yeah, so this is for our TCAP's model story, our seventh and eighth graders. So part of their curriculum is to travel and have some experiences. And so about 35 students and some of the staff are traveling to Chicago to do some visits there and enrich their learning opportunities.
Excellent, that sounds like a fun trip. Great, so we'll add that just onto consent if you have any questions or anything. Okay, perfect. So moving on to informational items. So first item is the Board Curriculum Learning Series and Community Partnership. So we'll defer to Jessie and Dan.
Yeah, thank you. So we'll start off, I'm gonna introduce Misty Warner again, Director of Full Child Services. Just kind of give her a shout out about the immense organization she does for all of our mental health services here in TCAP, as well as professional development of social workers, and you know, also feet on the ground. If we have behavior issues in schools, she is there and helps organize that. On top of all that, she does some awesome stuff with our community and outside resources that she's gonna talk about today.
Thank you. So I am gonna start with our Meeting of the Minds, and this is really a collaborative initiative that unites key community agencies. And we have, it started with just a few people in the basement of the courthouse, and we meet monthly. We have now grown to over 40 participants. We have our regulars that attend monthly, and then we have some that kind of come in and come and go as they can. But the great part is that they're receiving, we have 40, over 40 participants now receiving invitations with the agendas. And so they're able to view kind of where we are with our initiatives, where we are on our action plans, and then provide input. So our main goal has been just really enhancing communication, looking at developing that coordination of care, how we can work together to better serve our students and families. And then a big part of it is really just breaking down barriers and trying to advocate and look for ways that we can fill the holes and the gaps in services. So a few highlights that I wanted to talk about that we were able to do through this meeting was launching the Handle with Care as a Michigan initiative, and we were able to partner with the local law enforcement as well as Michigan State Police and the Child Advocacy Center. So this is an initiative where if a child has experienced an incident or some trauma, and it is outside of the school hours, then they will reach out with an email that goes directly to Kelly. We have kind of a flow chart that we've handed out previously where Kelly will then let the building principals know that they need to kind of, it's just a Handle with Care. That's what it says. The student has experienced an incident, and that has been really beneficial for teachers and for staff in the buildings to be able to check in with that student and to provide them with resources that they might need to just make it through the day or ongoing. Another thing that we were able to do through this meeting was develop a coordination of care team. So we have developed a primary care team and a secondary care team, and we're hoping to start, we were just able to kind of finish some of the logistics and the paperwork to be able to start seeing kids and working together in kind of a wraparound services team approach to care. A few other things that we were able to do were, we've been working with local physicians. We have a key point person at each local office that we're able to contact when we have a student that's struggling. We were able to talk with the courts and some of these, hello. That's okay. The courts and some of these providers within the area to have them implement our release of information into their intake process, which has been huge because if we don't know that a student is receiving services, we can't provide input. So they're able to, you know, have families sign our release of information and then reach out to the school. So we're able to then connect and coordinate with that care. We've also worked with the courts to be able to have the probation officers do the same thing, to be able to open up communication and talk with our students and families and then our teachers as well. So I am going to introduce Noel Wobeg, again. She's a prosecuting attorney and has been an integral part of the Meeting of the Minds. So I'll let you go.
Okay, thanks. Gonna follow some notes here, so I make sure I cover everything. So I just wanted to start, this group actually started, our very first meeting, Randy was there with me. Dr. Columbo, this from Northern Lakes Community Mental Health. This is sort of her brainchild, if you will. And it was a meeting of about five of us with Kristin Perkowski. And we sat down in my office and just kind of talked about how we could all work better together to help our students, to help the kids. And it was not long after the Oxford shooting. And I know John probably remembers that well. There were a lot of late night or early morning phone calls trying to coordinate, you know, the officers are trying to investigate a threat, find out, is this something serious? Do we need to close school? Can we keep it open and say that we've addressed everything? And so initially, we were hitting some roadblocks because of FERPA and other things that prevent school from providing that information. So we worked through some of those issues. We started talking about how we could better work together. Connie Taylor got involved, and so now her and I work together. When I have a criminal sexual assault case, and she's investigating it on the Title Line investigation, we work very closely together so that both of us get our, have our needs met in the deadlines that we have to without stepping on each other's toes. And as Misty said, it has turned from that small meeting into a meeting in the basement of the courthouse monthly where we have any number of those 40 different agencies appear, and we work together to kind of continue to solve some of these problems. We've got Munson, the health clinic, law enforcement, my office. We always have someone from juvenile probation officers as well as the juvenile diversion team. We have Judge Whitten is usually there with us, as well as our court administrator. We have people from CMH, we have someone from BIGZup North. So all of, just a huge group of people who are there to just try to support our kids. And as Misty was saying, you know, now we have this coordination of care team, which is huge. My office and law enforcement will be secondary partners to that. But you know, I feel like what used to happen was I'd get involved in a case with a child, and you'd try to reach out and see what resources are there. And probation was doing one thing and trying to provide services. And Department of Health and Human Services was doing something else. And the schools were doing something else. And maybe mom and dad were reaching out to CMH. And now everybody's in the same room. And with these consent to share forms, we're gonna be able to, well, the other, the primary members will be able to talk about that family and help that family not duplicate services, but make sure that they're all working together to do what's best for the child and for their family. I know one thing that every time I'm faced with one of these cases, I realize that so many of the families that we deal with are in survival mode. And I know a little bit personally about how hard it is to navigate mental health resources for a child. And a lot of our parents just can't do that. You know, they're, they're just trying to get to work and back and get kids to school or not to school and find care for them when there's a snow day and driving kids around, and they, they can't. They just don't have the, sometimes the knowledge and a lot of times just the time to do those things. And so with this team, we're gonna be able to help them do that. I think it's gonna make, it already has made a huge difference for a lot of our kids, and I think it's going to continue to do that. I want to recognize some of, I've got a couple guys from the city police back there.
I know a lot of you guys.
Yeah, yes. And I guess kind of a little shout out too to Justin. You know, having him in the schools has been huge. My favorite, I shared this story this morning, but I'll share it again. I was just walking downtown with my daughter over the summer, and we saw a couple kids, you know, moving around on skateboards downtown. And my daughter said, oh, I remember them from when I was at Central. And, and these kids saw him in his patrol car, immediately stopped, grabbed their boards, went over, just started chatting with them. And it was, they were clearly so happy to see him and trusted him. And I love seeing that because so many of the kids that we deal with grew up in homes where police are bad and police aren't there to catch you doing something wrong. And they're not there to support you or help you. And to be able to have somebody in the school and to change that attitude is huge. So really appreciate that. Yeah, just a couple other things that we've, that Misty didn't mention. We've changed the way we do our notification letters. By statute, my office has to provide notice to the school when someone is either charged or convicted with a crime. We're now doing that at the charging point so that when there's a no contact order, a lot of times these assaults happen with kids that are in the same schools. The school can help work with the, to make sure that no contact is facilitated and the victim feels safe. So we're not getting calls at my office saying, now she's gotta go to class with him every day or things of that nature. And then the court is also following up, and my office is following up with the disposition of those cases so the school knows what's, what's gonna be going on in the future and what that's gonna look like for that child. Yeah, I guess, you know, personally, I would just ask you to continue to support this program. I go to a lot of meetings, as you might imagine, and so many times we get nothing done. It's a lot of talking. This is an action meeting. We are accomplishing things, and I think really big things in the future with this coordination of care team. I think we're really gonna be able to, to help a lot of kids in our area. And you know, personally and selfishly, the relationships mean everything to me. When I come across one of these cases where I've got an issue with something, you know, one of the students of the school, maybe it's, you know, a potential threat to the school or a sexual assault that occurred with kids involved in the school, I know who to call, and I've got a name and a face. And instead of just calling, you know, TCAP's admin and hoping I can work my way through, I've got someone I can call that I know is, you know, super invested in helping our kids. And it's truly helped all of us. So if you have any questions, we're then happy to answer. But thank you.
And I just wanna kind of piggyback off that. The relationships are key. It is being able to pick up the phone. Like I said, we have key point people in almost every agency. I can't think of one that we don't at this point. And being able to, when we're struggling with a student or getting them into services or a transportation barrier, we're able to pick up the phone and make a call and get, you know, connected. And it's nice to be able to put names with faces where they're working. And we really have made some huge gains because we have not only, like every agency or representative there, but key agency representatives that are the decision makers that help us to get things done and move through. So it has been super helpful, and I'm super thankful for everybody that's been involved in that.
Yeah, it sounds like just the coordination. You know, sometimes in the systems, we, it's so repetitive. And just the connection, you know, and again, what's best for kids? That's what's best for kids, where everyone's on the same page. So yeah, so it is, it's great. Glad, glad it was created and started, and hopefully we can keep it going. And yeah, really appreciate you being here and sharing because it's so important. So thank you.
And I'll just say too, the letters and the notices to the schools are helpful for us to support all the students involved without having them to have to retell their story again to us, right? Like on both ends, typically, there's some embarrassment, and we're involved in this, and they don't want to have to call their principal and again, explain what's going on. We get that, and we're able to go, cool. How can we set up a plan to support these students that protects their dignity and protects the investigation and makes everyone feel safe without them having to then go, oh yeah, here's the story, and I have to tell it to one more person? So it's been very helpful for our large secondary schools in that, in that respect.
Question, is this basically a TCAP's kind of oriented program? Or does it cover all the kids in travesty?
Right now, it's TCAP's. I mean, we certainly hope that, that based on this model, it can expand. But we are, we're starting with TCAP, so yeah.
Thank you. I've got one quick question, and I don't know if this falls under Doll's umbrella or not, but we have had so many students this year who've lost a parent. And you mentioned anytime there's a trauma in the student's lives, does this, and then we get the text that protocols are being followed. What are those protocols? And is this under your umbrella at all, or?
So I think that depends. So we have a, we have a crisis team that I coordinate. And so if there is a death in, like when Terry Smith passed away, we had, we brought in our crisis care team. Or if a student, you know, something happens to a student living in the school system, we bring in the crisis team, and then we support that building for the day or a couple of days. And we have a specific protocol. It's called the Prepare Training that we went through. So we are trained in how to respond to that. And we do coordinate with the, I'm trying to think of. Michael's Place, yes. We coordinate with Michael's Place, so they will come in and talk to our staff. They've done some trainings, and then we refer families and kids to them as well.
I'd also say that we're supportive of Northad.
Yep, Northad is a part of the crisis team. We have social workers and other individuals from Northad that we call in as well to when needed.
Thank you. Great.
All right. So moving on, I want to talk about our partnership with Western Michigan University. So we are able to provide kind of an array of services up here through Western. And that is, they come up here, we do some professional development to our mental health team. They are also looking at kind of expanding that and doing some PD to our coaches as well as our junior kindergarten staff. So we're hoping to continue to have them come up here and kind of continue to provide trauma-informed programs and practices and PD around that. They also do trauma assessments for our students and caregivers. And it's been wonderful because we are able to do that right here at Glen Loomis. Before, we were trying to get our students and families all the way to Western Michigan University, and then they were coming to Cadillac, which was still a feat. So they come right here, and they will do trauma assessments for students and caregivers right here on campus. They are also providing parenting groups. So they're doing some sessions and working off of, it's called the Trust-Based Relational Model that they utilize, which is again, trauma-informed. We were able to fully run a parenting group with Blair and Travis Heights families from start to finish, and had great feedback on that. Brian Kay, who is the principal at Travis Heights, applied for a grant and an innovation grant through Teach Michigan and has developed what's called Roadrunner University. So he is again partnering with Western to come up and do some parenting sessions right at the school.
That's great.
And then we have also been working with Trails. Trails is a program that was founded out of the University of Michigan Medical School. And this opportunity was provided through our local ISP. And we have been able to have our entire mental health team trained in all three of their programs, ranging from universal education all the way to risk management and care. So we, in that Tier Two program, we are running what's called the Trails CBT and mindfulness groups. And that is a 312 curriculum. So we run Trails groups in grades three through 12, and that's district-wide. We were able to, last year, we had 135 students that went through the Trails program. And this year, we are at 85 students for semester one and counting. So having great feedback from all three of those programs that we've been trained in. They are very user-friendly, easy to implement, and they have some great resources. Our most recent training that we went through was the Suicide Prevention and Risk Management Training. Our entire mental health team went through that. And we are looking at adopting their suicide risk management protocol. So we're hoping to move in that direction. But that was a great training that we were all able to go through and complete as well. And then, most recently, we have partnered with the Cook Center. For, this is Parent Resource, or ParentGuidance.org. And this is a great resource. They have a ton of free information for educators, for parents to get on and get some questions asked. They have over 50 on-demand self-paced courses, which are great. They're broken down into little sections so parents can go in and kind of receive some education and training on different things that their child might be going through that they might have questions about. They also can submit a question right through the website. Everything is confidential. And ask a therapist that answers over 30 questions a month, and then those questions are then displayed, and parents can go on, and if they have similar questions, you can read a little bit about that. And then My Life Worth Living is an animated series that provides teens and adolescents with some mental health resources and strategies. And we are looking at possibly, looking at partnering with them to be able to add this, these links right to our website so parents can go right on and access it pretty easily.
So Misty, just a quick question on that. So how do parents, is this usually referred through, like therapists at the school? So if a kid has gone through, you know, just some mental health issues, and this is just a resource from the therapist that they introduce the parents to, how do parents know this exists?
As of right now, yes. Our mental health team, our counselors are all, we launched this, and they are all kind of pushing it out. But we have a rep that we're working with from the Cook Center that we are looking at, when we do add this to our website directly, if we get final approval on that. Then we have an email that will be sent out to our staff stating that this is coming, this is a resource you can share with families. And then we also have an email that we've created for parents to make them aware of it as well.
Yeah, our building principals are all aware of this too. Misty gave them the information as well. So if they see a family that might need, need this support, because it's a great resource, it's free there, they are pushing it out to families as well as they see that too. So counselors, social workers, our building administrators as well.
Okay.
Is it showing up in the student handbook as well, even though there's a ton of information in those handbooks?
Not yet, just because we've really, really recently launched this.
Okay.
So that's something, when we do that revision, it comes out.
Yeah, we're thinking about potentially putting it there and in our, the weekly newsletters that our buildings send home too. So it's clickable there for families as well. But we're just kind of waiting for all the final approval on that piece. It's cool. So thank you to you guys so much. We just really wanted to highlight some of the, some of the things So um we're hoping by bringing Misty here and highlighting her work, you guys would see a little bit of that. I know you guys all know about it, but.
Yeah, it's great. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
So you're welcome to stay, but I know you have a lot to do. Having been there many times, appreciate you guys coming this morning.
Thank you so much. Thanks for being here. Great information.
Yeah, so another partnership we wanted to highlight today, um Shelley Spencer here from Munson Medical Center. And we've had a partnership, I believe, started Wednesday last year where we did some planning together. I was part of that as a East Middle School lead principal. Um if you kind of want to take us through, maybe you can tag me, I know Alicia couldn't make it, but.
Yeah, she unfortunately was an hour away, so.
Oh boy.
So it's like two hours today.
Yeah, yeah, so uh it's on for standing. I hope I do it justice. So yeah, first I want to thank Jessie and Dan because you guys have been fantastic partners to us from the very get-go, so thank you um for that. And I'm just gonna, I know, I think Gina came here at some point, right, and presented to you all. So I'll just give you a quick update and kind of fly through this, but please stop me if you have any questions. Um so I don't know if the clicker is, oh, okay, okay, great. Um so before I go to the partnerships, um just to give you some background on like why, like kind of like in all transparency, why did we even come up with this kind of concept? Um and there were really two reasons. Number one, um we have eight hundred plus jobs open at Munson um at any given time. And that has not changed um in the last two years since COVID. And as you probably know, we have an incredibly low unemployment rate here in Traverse City at two point seven percent. Which basically means like we've almost tapped into every able working body. Um and so in full transparent selfishly, we said, my God, we need to start to build the pipeline for the future. Um and start to really create a workforce from the ground up. But more important than that, um lots of us who work in healthcare came from other industries and I think it's like teaching. When you work in healthcare, there's something special. There's a a magic sauce, if you will. And we actually kind of, as we talked about it, felt like we've got this asset in town, Matt Munson. Healthcare is a special place to work. Why aren't we communicating more about just the wonderful opportunities that exist within healthcare? And getting kids excited about it early on, because they don't have to leave Traverse City. And they can have a career in IT and marketing and HR and, you know, be a doctor. But it's, you know, there's so many opportunities right within our own backyard. So that's kind of how we got this started and said, let's try to build this from the bottom up with these awesome partners. Um and so as you can see here, we knew from the beginning, we needed to bring in, obviously, you all, T-CAPS. And then also some of our college partnerships um as well. Next slide, please. So I won't go through the strategies here, but I would just highlight a couple of things. Number one, when we started off the program, we said that we want to make sure we entwine the curriculum with real-world experiences. Um and that was like a guiding principle that we want people to learn here and then experience it. So that's kind of guided us as we've started to develop this. The other thing we wanted to build into the program was, as I said, most kids think doctor, you know, doctor, nurse. They do not realize that healthcare is just like mini-city of shops. I mean, you can basically do anything within a healthcare system. So again, creating that awareness that you can have a different type of career in healthcare that is beyond just a physician and a doctor, um a physician or a nurse. So we started this program um way back when, as Dan said, and we mapped out all the, what do we have today? Needless to say, there's some great work that's already happening, but we did recognize that it was all disconnected, right? It's like a little bit here, a little bit there. It's not seamlessly pieced together. And so that was really the aha moment, is how do we take all these disparate points, link them together in this seamless logical pathway? So we're purposely touching kids all along the way, parents, teachers and so forth. And it's almost like you're creating these memorable moments, right? And like just sparking interest and planting little seeds and it keeps building and building and building. And then maybe when they get to high school, they go, ah, I have other options that maybe I never thought about. That was kind of that whole exercise. So most of the people who work on this project, and I'm sure Jessie and Dan are like this, have full-time jobs and kind of do this as a extra. So we really needed to prioritize from the beginning. Um so what we said was, let's focus on starting at the beginning, elementary school and building up through the middle school. And that's where phase one has been, and I'll talk a little bit about what we've done to date. Um and then phase two is really focusing on the high school and now carrying it through. Um and we're going to start that work in January. So next slide, please. So where we started, um we've worked with um Jessie and Dan and the team to find the appropriate healthcare books. And so uh for, right from the beginning, uh during healthcare week, which is this very specific time of the year. Um the children, the kids will get these books and we are going to do recordings of them with some of our executives at Munson. Um so within the classroom, um the kids will be read a book and then we'll have some activities that the teachers can do with the kids related to learning. Again, just planting little nuggets of seeds. And again, the goal is to get them to think that it's not just, again, clinical experiences. You can think beyond that um when you think of healthcare. So plant little seeds. And then this is something we just finished. We wanted to have one kind of like immersion, right? Like a a big moment, like I think when we were all kids, I know in eighth grade, we went to Washington DC. I was on the East Coast. And it's like, there's certain things that stick in your head, you know? We wanted to create that experience for fifth graders. Um so six hundred of all the fifth graders just came to NMC um two weeks ago? God, can you remember?
Yeah, the west side on the fifteenth and the east side on the twenty-seventh.
And it was amazing. I mean, we're learning, right? So there's definitely things we can do better next year. But I think they experienced, what's it like to work in a lab? What's it like to be a finance person? What's it like to be on the business side of healthcare, IT? Thinking of all the areas, nursing, you know, the traditional ones, but also some of the ones that aren't, again, traditional. And the funniest story was one of the kids came out of the um session and we had them write down what they want to be. And the one was, I'm going to be a finance person. And I was like, who leaves a healthcare, you know, kind of immersion things that says, I'm, I love that so much, I want to go into finance, you know? I mean, our VP of Finance was like, yes, I got one, you know? So, you know, again, so just exposing them and and creating a nugget, you know, to say, oh, there's something more that I can explore as I get older.
I went to, uh, I was part of the the second day on the twenty-second. Um my daughter was part of this in the fifth grader at Central Grade School. And it was just a wonderful experience, not even obviously for the the healthcare aspects of it, but for those kids to be at NMC. And to meet several different buildings over at the community college and just to see that this even exists. Uh I thought it was super cool and a great opportunity. It's just, they've done so much there uh since Dan went there in nineteen ninety-six.
The other thing was that our fifth grade teachers took their classes. So, you know, our teachers are phenomenal, but also they don't have the exposure to. I've learned a ton about Munson from just working with Shelley on this project. For example, they have programs in which a kid can come at an entry-level job and then Munson will actually pay for their schooling through NMC or Grand Valley to gain credentials. And it was like, oh my goodness, I didn't even realize they had those types of pathways. And so for some of our kids who maybe don't know exactly what they want it to look like, what a great employer that will invest in their employees to grow skills. So our teachers went along with their their fifth grade classes and they got an opportunity to learn about these fields and see this too, which then will also multiply to what their knowledge and exposure is.
And we did do post-surveys, um so unfortunately, Alicia is gathering that data, but we did do it with the teachers and actually with the kids as well. So we'll see, kind of gather that. And then again, we'll continue to perfect it as we go forward, um learn and learn and and grow. Next page, please. So I'm excited about this because again, this one is about from sixth grade, you know, and all the way through high school. Again, we only have six through eight right now, but we'll continue this on through high school. Is every uh fall and every spring, we'll come into the classroom um and teach something related specifically to the curriculum. So we've been working with the teachers and again, Jessie and Dan have been great, getting meetings with all the teachers to decide what's the right topic. So say it's genomics, right? Let's just use that as an example. How do we bring genomics to life, right? And like bring in like a physician to talk about, well, what is like genomics in terms of, how do you then tailor medicine, right, to somebody's genomics, right? But just like things like that. Why is it important to learn about waves? Well, then we bring in X-ray machines, right, to talk about, well, what do X-rays have to do with waves? Um so that's kind of what we're working on right now and we're launching that, I want to say this month. Um we start this month.
Yeah, we we've met that, so the science teachers primarily have met with um Munson and have thought about, like, like Shelley said, where it goes and what makes. And we really don't want this to be an isolated standalone event. We want this to be connected to what the kids are already learning, like, right? That relevance piece is huge. Um so they've already started planning the curriculum and things. I I think one of the grade levels might be launched this month.
Yeah, I think you're right. Um so that, again, so again, another touch points every spring, every fall and every spring. I love the broken bones one, because when we came up with that, we were talking to the teachers and they were like, well, what's like really important to kids? And when they get to like that grade, sixth grade, well, they all start breaking bones because they're in sports and stuff. So we're like, okay, well then, let's make them understand that when they break something, it's not the end of the world, right? And that if they go to the doctor, here's what's going to happen and here's the process and here's how X-rays play into it, you know? And create that real-world experience again for them. So again, trying to integrate everything nicely together. So what's next? So right now, um elementary school, we're getting ready to launch that and we're recording those segments. We'll launch that in the spring. Middle school, we'll fully launch that in the spring. We're starting the high school, again, immersing into the high school. And then the most important thing we want to do next is we want to create a summer internship program. A really um selective program where we bring in somewhere between, I don't know, fifty kids, twenty-five to fifty kids per summer. And they get to experience all the different jobs and they go through a rotation. So maybe they spend two weeks in marketing, they then spend two weeks in food and nutrition, right? Why is food and nutrition important in the hospital? Well, we've got to make sure people are healthy, right, when they leave the hospital. Um maybe spend two weeks in IT and some other clinical areas. So we're starting to build out what that could look like. Um and then give them the opportunity, again, we don't like one-and-dones, right? We want to carry it through. So if some kids participate in the internship, then throughout the year, they might have opportunities to volunteer or have paid opportunities. Because let's face it, there's kids, right, who need to make money, right? And so give them opportunities to kind of jump in throughout the year. Um so that's the next thing we're working on. And then also, as Jessie said, it's really important that we start to build a communication platform to talk to parents and the children about careers in healthcare that aren't free. Like there are so many career pathways these kids can go down and not have to spend sixty thousand dollars at a college. I mean, I'm all for college, I don't want to say I'm not, but but there are different pathways depending on your circumstance. And so we want to make sure that we're starting to link the colleges and the communication to say, you know, maybe you want to go into become a surgical tech. And guess what? Here's the type of salary you can make and it's not going to cost you anything. Because guess what? We pay for it, we also have some grant money and you can go to school and eighteen months later, you can be working and making a great living. Um so we want to open those like windows um and kind of give people a lens into how you can have different types of careers and not get into massive debt. And then the last thing we're working on is we're trying to then build this communications in a really fun way. So we're gonna, we've uh, we're working um on, it's called the Health Odyssey. And it's going to have little robots, characters that um again, will kind of be like the essence of the communication. And these robots um will form the basis of all the communications, visiting different places in the hospital. And hopefully we'll be able to use your newsletter once in a while so we can communicate out. But we want to make sure the communication's done in a really fun and interesting way, not just for the kids, but also for the parents. So that's kind of where we are. Um again, I, you guys have been awesome, really fantastic to work with, so thank you. And we'll hopefully by the end of this year, be finished with the the planning and fully executed. And then next year, it'll be fine-tuning and continuing just to make it better and better. Questions?
It's so great that, I mean, uh you know, Munson is one of our largest employers here in Traverse City and such a great connection just for our kids to, you know, there there are so many opportunities. And unless, you know, I've had friends that started as kind of the basic, basic, but again, have worked their way up to do different things. And has their interests changed, have changed at Munson, uh Munson has supported them growing in other ways. And I think it's just really great for our kids, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for being here and and sharing all of that, because you know, a lot like, a lot of people don't know what what opportunities and so.
And and you're a hundred percent right, our philosophy, we're trying to change just the way as you guys are evolving. We're trying to say, let's not just look at a resume, you know, what are the skills that kids and people need, right? You can, just because your resume says you are, I was a marketing person, I'm in HR now, right? I switched careers completely. Like if you have the right skills, right, and you build those skills, you can do anything. Um and so we really want people to have opportunities to be mobile um and not be pigeonholed just because a piece of paper says, this is what you had.
Yeah, so. And it's interesting, just when we volunteered, um when I have volunteered with our seniors that are graduating and you start to ask them. You know, there's some kids that are very driven, know what they want, kind of know their direction. There's a whole other group of kids that don't know. And they don't know what their strengths are and what their, maybe their opportunities are. And and so um, you know, sometimes they just need that chance to say, gosh, I'm really good at this, I'm really organized or I'm really. And then they can kind of find that, you know, direction, so.
Especially getting involved in the schools early on, because you think of hospitals as being such an intimidating place.
Yeah.
You know, and if they can find out where they can get a, you know, a way in.
Exactly, and that's exactly it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the other side benefit is they learn how to use Munson more appropriately.
Yeah.
And that should be a message into the full community.
Yeah.
You know, a lot of people don't understand much about their bodies. They just don't. And then you'll get someone that comes in, you can transplant this and you can transplant that. Well, my grandfather had a stroke, he can transplant a brain, you know? And and just the appropriateness of what is reasonable. So I commend you for that. They did a thing where I used to be, and it was coordinated with the community college. And so kids in the high school could take community college credit and then go into the hospital, very targeted. And do things. And so my daughter did that and followed physical therapy, the dietary person, the pharmacy person. All of these guys, very specialized, attended rounds, saw cardioversion.
Wow.
Um, yeah.
That's amazing.
Pretty extensive.
That's great, yeah.
So yeah, I I think a lot of things are possible and I think this is great.
Well, I think and I'd love your input on this down the line, but we we really do want to target at-risk kids at some point, you know? It's kind of like what you're saying, it's a, it's it's the kids who maybe don't know or are struggling. Um because we do have an in um a program within Munson now called Eagle. That is um provides social services around the employees. Um so do you have transportation issues, mental health support? Um, you know, and it's just basically housing issues, but as a kid maybe gets a job and they're still struggling, right? Um they could go into the Eagle program um and get support, so they're not just starting a job and they're on their own type thing. So I just think there's an opportunity to maybe help children um make the careers, get into a job. Maybe they don't know what they want, but then we give them the opportunity to try different things while we're giving the surround service support um that they really need. So that's another opportunity, I think, down the line.
On that, um also, we found that a lot of times if you use two kids that are a little bit, it's a strange circumstance. If you have two that go through together, they support each other.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
And they stay with it much longer.
I love that idea. I'll think about that some more, yeah, how do we partner, yeah.
So that they have.
Their own community support, yeah.
And two, and actually, our rule of thumb was three.
Okay.
So uh.
I love that.
Might be useful.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your support. We appreciate it.
Great, thanks for being here and yeah, walking us through all the.
Yeah, this has been a great model about how do we connect as a school system intentionally and meaningfully with with a local employer, right? I mean, Munson is huge, but we have other huge employers. So we are sort of looking at like, what does this model look like? And, you know, there are other employers that if they came to us, how could we connect with them in a meaningful way too? I will give a huge shout-out to NMC and Grand Valley though. They really have come to the table um with the idea that not only can these kids get employed and work with Munson, but then they actually don't have to leave here at all to get educated and gain all the skills they need for a really um stable professional career, so really cool.
Great, great partners.
Yeah.
Good stuff.
Shelley, you do, you are welcome to stay, but you do not need to stay as well as we transition to our next exciting topic of school index.
I would love to stay.
Great, thanks for being here again.
Thank you.
Um so yeah, Jessie led right into that, so we'll move on to our uh Michigan Department of Education School Index scores.
Yeah, so you know, we, Dan and I, when we planned this meeting, we really wanted to highlight the community partnerships that we've done. that we've done a really nice job of a school system embedding and working with. Um, and then this was sort of just hot on the news. So I wanted to make sure I get this in front of you guys and just had a little conversation to start some understanding about it. This is how the state, uh, scores all of our public schools in Michigan. And if you've been around long enough, you know the state likes to change rating systems, right? At one point we had letter grades and then we're numerical and then we're.
Colors.
Colors, right? We're back to index scores. So these bar graphs here just kind of show you what makes up a school's score, right? So at our elementary and middle school, and do not ask me why they chose those percentage numbers. I mean, I sort of know, but I would go on a very large tangent. Like, yes, seventeen point eight percent is school quality. And then you'll see the same four factors that we, uh, score our elementary and middle school are identical for our high school. Our high school then adds in graduation rate at eleven point one percent and our English learner's participation at one point one percent. But those are how they are composed. Growth is, I know, it's, there's a lot of questions you can ask and I'm more than willing to answer more afterwards too. Growth is composed of a student's score from, only on their English and math assessments. So for students to have a growth score, um, they have to be fourth grade and up because they have to have two years of state assessments, right? Our third graders, it's the first year they take a state assessment. There's no growth score because there wasn't a prior year score. I'm just talking M-stop on that, yeah. Except for high schools, PSAT, SAT. Um, and then proficiency is not what we would typically think about. What we talk about proficiency being at the sixtieth percentile or meeting college benchmarks. The state has set proficiency scores for each grade level, based upon our trajectory that they built a few years ago. Um, school quality is made up of some of those that I listed there for you. Um, staffing ratio is, uh, me, uh, it's kind of defined as a librarian, um, some arts, some music, opportunities for students there. And then you'll see, do we participate in the state assessments? And then graduation and English learner progress is something new they've added. So, how did we do on our schools? So our first slide here is elementary. And so the red bars are the scores that were just released publicly. And those are scores based on last year's school year on those categories that I had before. The blue is the prior year, just for a little reference point for, for you. And I don't think this is going to surprise you a lot when you look at where our higher score, schools are. They track similar to what our NWA scores are, um, and what our M-stop scores are that we have presented to you guys. One thing that I will, um, just give kudos to, we've done a lot of work at a few of our, um, elementaries on just, Dan and I love talking about tier one instruction. It's not glamorous, but it really matters, right? Every day, what are we putting in front of our kids? How consistent are we ensuring that they're engaging with high-quality materials, instructional methods that work? So you'll see some nice growths there. Blair had a really nice growth, um, in both their growth and proficiency. Traverse Heights, which is another one that's worked really hard, had a really, um, good growth and specifically their growth score from year to year of kids growing. So you'll see some of that there. Any questions about those elementary scores in particular? All right, so moving on to our secondary schools. So you'll see the middle schools are there on the left for you. Those pretty much, it's, our, our schools are so large that you would anticipate that kind of variation happens. So I, I wouldn't call either of those significant growths or declines. The one that really stuck out to us the most was Central High School. So Central High School had scored a ninety-one and then this, this pass scoring, they fell down to a seventy-eight. And that was the first one that grabbed my attention. And it is because, uh, this last school year, they had enough students who qualified as a subgroup in special education. So once you hit over thirty students at a grade level who are special education, that subgroup then becomes a bigger factor in your overall score. So Central High School had, I think Tiffany, we said thirty-two, thirty-four? Thirty-four students in, um, that SAT year who are special education students. So they become twenty-five percent of the overall score for proficiency and growth for that building. So it is a little hard to compare last year's to the prior years at Central because in that ninety-one, they didn't have the special ed students as counting for twenty-five percent of their proficiency and growth scores. So that black bar that I put there, um, gives you a little bit more of a year to year. That black bar would be if, if, if our special education population at Central High School had been below thirty, that's where they would have scored as a building. So that kind of compares year to year. I did take West and I thought, well, let's say West had twenty-eight special education students, so they didn't qualify to be bumped into a subgroup. And had they had their special ed kids, uh, qualify as a subgroup, their overall score would have been an eighty-one, which is a little closer to that seventy-eight. Again, it's something that we're watching. I actually pulled the special ed numbers at Central just as curious. Tiffany, we were talking, gosh, I wonder if this is just what's going to happen every year now that they'll qualify as a subgroup? Um, and they're right on the bubble there. I think they were right at twenty-nine or thirty kids, um, in that class. But it is something that we're just going to have to watch. This, the state makes subgroups really to try to, to try to say to a district and a school, hey, are you making sure that you are providing, um, support to this group of vulnerable students that typically aren't as successful? And I would say we always are looking at our subgroups. But this was the year that one of our schools had that, had that size over thirty that hit that. And then TC High on the far, um, right? I mean, not trying to discredit school indexes, but this is a really tough one for us to measure value of that school system. I think we all really think about TC High as, uh, students, we want students to earn diplomas. We want students to be ready for that next step beyond high school. So are we developing those skills? I'm not necessarily sure if growth and proficiency on the SAT are the best assessments of that, for that population, but they're up there too.
Not at this time. It may need a few years.
A few years, yeah.
And then you can see the growth.
Yeah, it, if you guys have more questions, I'm more than happy. I've, I've done a lot of the workshops on this and I have a pretty good understanding. It is definitely a confusing metric and it's interesting the way the state's trying to balance everything. Overall, our schools across the board did well when you compare them relatively to other schools, our size and this region. I have nothing that really concerns me. My biggest thing was that special ed at Central and Tiffany, I'm going, hmm, that's interesting. And so we've already had some conversations with Ben and, um, how can we really make sure that we're supporting those kids to be as successful as possible?
Is that a specific grade level?
It is, eleventh grade, SAT.
Jessie, are there very many special high schools, uh, like, uh, the Traverse City?
Like an alternative high school? There's not as many as there are of the more traditional school, but there are, um, a fair amount of alternative high schools throughout the state, yes.
It'd be interesting to see how they all perform and whether somebody has some good ideas to help with the growth.
We'll tell you that many, many, many of them now have transitioned to one hundred percent online. The model of TC High, uh, face-to-face is getting less and less and less because it's just more expensive to run.
It is expensive.
And so, you know, we are seeing that really, really die out. I mean, to be honest with you. You know, we, we value having that. So, you know, now having, we do have the online option, obviously, and trying to blend options together there for kids to have. But you're going to see most, most of them are one hundred percent online schools.
Yeah, I really.
So the few that are out there, we definitely have Sault Ste. Marie's one that we've, we've had a lot of conversations with lately. We had a team go down to Genesee, um, to their alternative high school and visit Joe.
And Chalke went on that one too, yeah.
And Chalke went. So we're, we're trying to reach out to those that are out there that are somewhat still doing what we are to try and learn from.
Yeah, because I think some of these kids really benefit from high touch.
Agreed.
Yeah, and that's why I, I, yes, this is a metric, absolutely. I want to look at this more so for our traditional schools. And for TC High, we're really looking, are we getting kids exposure to careers in college readiness? Are we able to maybe get them into an introductory course at NMC? Are we able to ensure they can earn a diploma, right, and graduate before they age out, right? I love the SAT, but I'm not as concerned about how they're scoring on the SAT. I, I don't necessarily know if that is where the focus should be for those kids at this time.
And we've talked a lot about the wraparound services that are offered at TC High, right? Babies and, you know, all the mental health supports. So while that, that's a great growth for them, um, there's a lot of kids who need the wraparound services and that is one of their specialties.
And the growth is grad, watching them graduate, right? Getting them across the stage and what would happen if, if that program wasn't there? The kids that graduate every year from that program is, from that school is amazing, so.
It is great. It really provides those kids with a different opportunity and a different life, so, yeah.
So instead of SAT, their, their involvement with career tech would be a much better.
That apprenticeships, uh, we're working right now to figure out, you know, what, how can we get these kids some internships, some exposure to different? Some of these kids just, you don't know what you don't know. And so like getting them out there, getting them introduced to partners like Munson and different businesses and getting them into the entry level, like at stable employment, can really change some lives there, so.
It was interesting to hear, um, Shelley talk about that Eagle program. Just, um, you know, if there are babies, right, Munson has a daycare. If there are transportation issues, like there, it's really cool, very cool. So, well, thank you, thank you. Is that, that wraps it up for index?
That wraps it up for index. If you have more questions, please reach out.
No more graphs.
I mean, the top little pink line, the, yeah, that's a strange one, I don't understand.
Yeah, but that's a new federal one that they wanted to add to states because, um, yeah, it'll be interesting to see if that stays or goes, yeah.
Okay. Well, good, then we'll move on to celebrations and successes. So, um, Jessie and Dan.
All right, so we just want to highlight some pretty cool stuff going on at all of our different buildings. So this first one is, um, from our cognitively impaired program at the high school. They did an activity with our AP classes, um, some of our AP literature classes, actually. They're reading Frankenstein and then the cognitively impaired kids were, they were making sculptures and, um, different three D models together. So it was a cool, like, mentorship and exposure for both of those two different programs there.
Very cool.
And here at elementary, uh, CK LA pilot visit. So we have several teachers continuing to be early adopters slash, um, piloting the CK LA curriculum. And we're seeing some, uh, some great things from that, getting some great feedback.
Yeah, a couple of our West Middle School students who have been recognized as winners for the Patriot Pen Contest, which was an essay contest. So both of these adorable West Middle School students earned that honor. So congrats to them.
And it looks like here at Westwood, we had, uh, seven and four news team meteorologist, Heather Brecker, taught classes about clouds and cloud formations and how that produces snow. Timely. Timely. That north-northwest wind.
Then our Trojan volleyball girls, this, they were recognized. This is the first time that that team has earned the honor of winning a regional championship. So very excited to watch that team. Yeah, yeah.
So great.
They played really, really well. So congrats to all of those players.
Yeah, really good stuff.
Musician and motivational speaker Jeremy Hobbs visited Willow Hill. Did some music there and some, uh, kind of went through their PBIS program, which they, you have the acronym SOAR at Willow Hill, Safety, Ownership, Acceptance, and Respect.
And then one of our, we have this club on, um, it acts as a club on both sides of our high schools, but our debate team. So this is the West Senior High Debate Team that just recently, um, debated in a competition at Utica. I know that there's a big competition at Dexter on Saturday. I might have a child who's debating in that. So it's, it's a great extracurricular program that our kids on both sides of town are able to get involved in. I think the topic right now they're debating is military presence in Uganda or something. So it's very, it's always interesting what the kids are debating on international policy, so.
Here at Silver Lake, students wrote letters, um, during Veterans Day, delivered them to Rico's Cafe. And this year Veteran Chuck Watson, a US Army Lieutenant, visited the school personally, delivered a card of Peyton, given one to the students there that wrote one of the letters. Other veterans also wrote letters back, uh, creating meaningful connections with students and veterans.
And then we wrapped up an amazing, uh, musical over at Central. I know West is kicking theirs off, they just had their auditions. But I will put a plug just for anyone watching who just loves any type of phenomenal music. All of our programs, choir, band, orchestra, um, I got them all there. Yes, all will be having their holiday concerts this month. And our TCAP's students are unbelievable. So I would encourage any of our public, there are holiday concerts. Actually, I think there was supposed to be one tonight at West Middle School. Almost every night here leading up to the holidays, um, they are free, they are amazing. Our kids will impress you at any of those areas. So I would highly encourage the public to jump on the website and see what they've got going on there and catch one or two of those. They just, it's a, they do a phenomenal job, our kids. So congrats to the Central students and we'll be looking forward to that West musical that'll be opening in the spring.
And lastly, here at Blair, they have their, uh, week of November twenty-second Think Winners. That is their PBIS, uh, theme. Team player have respect and control, never give up and kind. So there's our winners from our Blair Bobcats.
That's great. Ah, good stuff, good, good, always, always good to end our meeting with those celebrations and successes. So, well, thank you, uh, everybody for being here, Dan. I know you're under the weather, I've been fighting a little something. We've had snow days coming back from a holiday, so just thank you to everybody. And, um, I believe this is Flannoy's last Curriculum Committee meeting, is that right?
I believe so.
Yeah, so, um, I can't thank you enough for all you do and I'm still going to call you a quitter every time I see you. But, uh. I love you to death.
With all due respect.
I say it with love, um, but yeah, just thank you for everything you've done and, um, served on curriculum and, um, it's been great, great working with you, so.
Thank you, Erica, as you, you as well.
Well, good, 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 good. Well, with that, um, our next Curriculum Committee meeting is Tuesday, January seventh, uh, at eight-thirty. And we'll have a new Curriculum Committee possibly and a new chair. And so we'll see what happens in the new year. So, um, thank you, everybody, and with that, I'll adjourn the meeting, so.
All right.
Good stuff.
Thank you.